Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:03. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father, we give you glory, we give you honor and praise. We thank you for your faithfulness and your mercies that are new every morning. We thank you for allowing us to come together once again to do the business of the city. We welcome you into this meeting, and we ask that you help us and that you guide us through this meeting. Bless us with your peace and your wisdom. Bless the citizens of Glen Arden, all who's associated with Glen Arden, employees, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilwoman Farid, here. Councilwoman Gillum. Councilwoman Harrington. Councilwoman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by three. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The agenda is hereby adopted. All right. We are at the public hearing for the charter amendments and the regular ordinances and resolutions. We've divided them out, so we're going to take them in sections. So first, we're going to hear public comments related to the charter amendment resolution. And then after that time is up, then we'll get into public comments about all the other routine legislation that's on the docket for the month of October. With that being said, we want to start out by giving you just an overall summary before opening the floor up to the citizens. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Karen Ruff, who's the attorney that has provided legal sufficiency on the charter amendments.
Thank you very much. And so may I go through each one separately, so we can do CR 01-2025 first?
Correct. Just give me one second, and I can open it on the TV, so they can actually see it. And I think some of you in the building have copies of it as well. But I'll open it, so we can go through it as you talk about it. And we'll start with number one.
All right. So Charter Resolution 01-2025 is a charter amendment resolution of the City Council of Glen Arden amending the charter of the city to provide for the more efficient operation of city government by establishing, commencing with the May 2025 city elections, a seven-member council elected at large, from which the members shall select a mayor, and delineating the mayor, council, treasurer, and city manager duties and responsibilities with this change by amending Article 3, Organization of Council, Article 4, the mayor, Article 5, city manager, Article 6, Section 603 Code of Ethics, Article 8, finance, Article 9, personnel, Article 11, city property, Article 12, general provisions, and Article 13, boards, commissions, and advisory committees, and repealing and reenacting with amendments Article 7, registration, nomination, and election procedures, to update references to state law, and to make other amendments of a housekeeping nature for the purpose of clarifying provisions. At this time, I would like to say that we've had some eyes on the resolution since it was before you last, and there have been a few changes that have been made, all of a non-substantive nature. And I'd like to go through those first, if you don't mind. One is on page two. At the very bottom of page two, you'll see that we replaced the word "following" with "commencing with" to be consistent with the phrase as used in other places in the resolution. Then on page 11, there were brackets deleted to delete Section 506 and to insert Section 406, when in fact, the 506 reference was correct. Then on page 15, there was what I will call an errant bracket that we have deleted. On page 17, Section 713, instead of saying "in council," it now says "on council." Page 18, 716, after May 2025, we added the word "election." It had been inadvertently deleted from that. Page 19, Section 802, the reference was changed to "council" to reflect the changes in the legislative body, rather than mayor and council. And then last, on page 27, it was added that the mayor pro temp would also be subject to taking an oath. So if you... This is the charter amendment that proposes to change the organization of the legislative body, and you will still continue to have seven council members, but... They will all be elected at large. Nobody will be elected from a ward. And then from the seven council members, one person will be selected as mayor from that body. This will not be effective until the May 2025 election. So none of the changes in this particular charter resolution will affect anybody's current seat on council, or as mayor, or treasurer, city manager, any of those things whose duties have been changed in this resolution to be effective following the election. Okay? There will still be four-year terms. We amended Section 304. That was one of the sections that was changed to reflect a change in state law, because the reference to the Open Meetings Act is more... is broader than what was listed in the charter. And also, it's... The General Assembly has told us what Open Meetings Act is and when you can close it, and so we wanted to be consistent with that. Then in Section 305, you'll see where we previously addressed the president and vice president. That will now change in favor of a mayor and a mayor pro temp. And all of the president and vice president items will automatically expire after the May 2025 election, because that's when you'll move to the mayor and the mayor pro temp model. Now, it also addresses the mayor's duties and responsibilities, and the mayor will preside over all meetings of the council. The mayor may participate in all discussions, shall have a vote on all matters before the council, shall have all the rights, duties, and obligations of a council member, and shall exercise such other powers and perform such other duties as are or may be conferred and imposed upon the mayor in the charter or by other ordinances of the city. And the mayor shall also be recognized as the head of the city government for all ceremonial purposes, by the courts for serving a civil process, and by the governor for the purpose of military law. So because we're making that change as well, Article 4, that deals with the mayor and the mayor's responsibilities and duties, those provisions will sunset after the newly-elected people are sworn in after the 2025 election. We have also made changes to Article 5, which is the city manager, because the city manager has been clarified to be the chief administrative officer and the head of administrative branch of the government. And so we had to rearrange some of the duties of the city manager and who he or she would report to. So it would be the council after the new election. Article 7, registration, nomination, and election, as you may suspect, had to be repealed and reenacted, because we went from having a mayor and a council vote and wards to at-large. So there were a lot of changes that were made with respect to that, although I would say, and I would leave it to the committee to correct me, but I do believe that the general process that you followed isn't changing. You know, your board of elections, and how the votes will be done, and things of that nature. Article 8, finance, treasurer's duties, we had to alter just a little bit as to who the treasurer reports to. And throughout that article, how duties changed from being the mayor, reporting to the mayor, et cetera, to the city manager instead, performance evaluations being done by the city manager, things of that nature. Article 9, personnel, one of the changes there was that the clerk to the council will be appointed by the council. Article 12 clarifies again who takes the oath and before whom. And then some other changes were simply to clarify the laws that have changed since the charter had been adopted, to update those laws. So there were some references to Article 23A, which has now been recodified as a local government article. So you'll see those types of changes in there as well. But that would be my summary of Charter Resolution 01-2025.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ruff. All right. So with that, as I stated in the beginning, that we're splitting this into sections for votes who just arrived. The first portion of our meeting will be solely for citizens to speak on a charter resolutions, given the importance of them. And once everyone has spoken, who wants to speak on charter amendments, then we'll wrap that up, and then we'll move to the other resolutions and ordinances. That's on the docket for the month of October. All right? So with that being said, the floor is open to public comment... for public citizen comment on the charter amendment resolutions. If you could, if you're in the House, you can raise your hand, or you can walk to the podium, and I'll call on you. I ask that you state your name, what ward you're from, and then you'll have five minutes to speak. If you're online, I'll stop sharing so I can see. If you're online, please raise your virtual hand, and I'll call on you, and we'll go from there. So with that...
Jennifer Jenkins, lifelong Glen Arden resident of Ward 3. And I would have never thought... I try... I'm sorry.
One second. I'm sorry.
Ms. Jenkins, you don't live in Glen Arden. Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Your mom still stays here, but you're at 3101, Lido, the way. Listen, council member, you've taken this fight to court, and you lost. I suggest you just let me... I suggest you let me...
One second.
I suggest you allow me to make my comments before I have to take the city to court or contact the Attorney General. Contact.
Yeah, five minutes.
I have been a resident, lifelong resident of Glen Arden, Ward 3. And the last thing I thought I would do was leave a long council meeting myself today to come here about a charter change. I disagree with it. I hope you all will reconsider this charter change. I could understand a one representative in each ward, and then four at-large seats. I can understand that. I can live with that. I believe I made that change myself once. But to make all of our council members at-large runs the risk of two wards possibly not having representation, and that makes me very sad. It makes me extremely sad that that could happen. But it's quite possible that we could end up with seven council members out of my ward. As much as I love Ward 3, I wouldn't want to see that happen, because I believe it would be unfair towards one and two. I think that the people need to elect a dedicated member in their ward, at least one. And also, I'm fine with having an increase to the at-large members, but I think that this is just not a good idea, and it makes me very, very sad. And I would ask that you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Anthony Powell, and I live in Ward 1. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Glen Arden. My parents came to the city in 1959, so I've been in the city for 65 years. I've always voted in the city elections, and I always voted for the office of the mayor. Now you're going to take away my right to vote for mayor. You have to explain to me why you're taking away my right to vote for the office of mayor. City man? I mean, if you'd be upset if Donald Trump said, "I'm going to tell you who to vote for, and I'm going to take away your right to vote for this person, I'm going to take away your right to vote for that," because you're doing the same thing. Number two, this city is run strictly off property taxes. You don't have bingo, there's no chicken dinner, you're not selling chicken dinners down here. It's run strictly off property taxes. You should put this on the ballot for the election next year, have the citizens decide to vote up or vote it down. You shouldn't be in the position to decide the governor's body for this city. You want people to move here by houses in Glen Arden. You just say, "We're going to tell you how to vote and who to vote for." That doesn't make any sense. So I hope you'll take this...
Excuse me. Please turn your mic.
Turn the mic on.
Is that mic on?
Yeah.
There you go.
Let's get started. Like I said, I'm a... For those who didn't hear me the first time, a longtime resident of Glen Arden. My folks came here in 1959, so I've been in the city 65 years. I've always voted in city elections. I always voted for the office of the mayor. Now you have to explain to me and other people why you're taking away my right to vote for the office of the mayor. And number two, this city is run strictly off property taxes. Whether you go to these meetings or not, those people still pay property taxes. You should either put this on the ballot for next year, have us vote it up, have us vote it down, or just be done with it. Right now, we're probably the least democratic city in the state of America. Nothing here has ever placed on the ballot. We have no say-so of anything. You know, you don't produce any emails, any text messages, any letters from any citizen demanding that we change the charter, but you changed the charter. So that's the part I don't understand. This city is run strictly off property taxes. Everybody pays property taxes here. Either put this on the ballot so people can vote for it, and just be done with it. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. There is... One second there. Oh, shit, I can't do that. There's a comment online. I do not know. It just says iPhone looks like an Apple, or... I don't know what that is. But can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, this is Mario Cross, Ward 3.
All right. Mr. Cross, you have five minutes.
Yes, I just want to echo what Mr. Powell was stating about putting the information of voting, of changing the charter, onto the ballot, so that the citizens can have a voice by voting, not by the council's decision afore, to change everything on the city charter. It would be best, in everyone's best interest, if this was on a ballot, and then you could get a true representation of what the citizens feel. I do not agree with the changing of the mayorial position, removing that, and putting it as the council picks the mayor. That means that all the council members running at large, which I also disagree with, that might come up with the same situation, where there's no representation through all the wards equally. So that should not be something that should be pushed for anyway, but that should be something that the citizens should vote on. And also, removing the mayorial position and turning the mayorial position to a mayor pro temp and selected by the council is absurd. That should be something that the citizens should have on the next ballot and push forth and see what our decisions, what our voices, what our views are moving forward, and not just the views of the seven that's sitting on the dais.
Is that all, Mr. Cross?
This is a democracy, so we should follow democracy standards, democracy rules, and let the citizens be heard. Thank you.
State your name and your ward, and there you go.
Hello, I'm Diana Price, Ward 2, and I am opposed to the change. But first, I want to say this. We Glen Arden voted for the mayor twice. We voted her in, and we had to do a runoff. We voted her in again. We voted a strong mayor in. We voted a strong mayor in. That has changed. You guys changed the charter... I'm sorry. I'll get it when I finish. We changed it, and now we have a weak mayor. Now you're trying to change it again and eliminate that position for something else. I do agree with us voting to have a change, if we're going to have a change. Everybody in Glen Arden has to have a vote on whether or not we want a mayor or not. It shouldn't be up to you guys. We voted her in. We support her. It's evident in everything that we do and support of that. We support you guys, but you can't change and make decisions for us. So I am in support of us voting in whether or not we support this change. That's it.
Thank you. Just one point of clarification. So Mayor Cross will continue to be mayor throughout the rest of her term, so this does not directly affect her.
Well, even if it's Mayor Cross or whoever comes after Mayor Cross, we want a mayor to represent Glen Arden. We love to have the council be the council members. It's a check and balances. And if you take that away, there is no checks and balances. You say it is, but the charter is structured in a way that gives us the checks and balances in every area, but you're changing everything, and so it won't be even, in my opinion.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Solomon, online? If you stay... You have five minutes.
Yes, Council President, good evening, everybody. My name is Solomon from Ward 2. I just want to say I agree with every person that came up there to speak about the council not changing the charter. We want our mayor. We're going to elect our mayor. We don't want you guys to change what you're about to change. We know she's going to be there for the rest of her term. The next mayor, I suggest that we should always elect our mayor. The citizens of Glen Arden should always elect their mayor, not the council member. So I support everybody that stood up for the mayor. That is just mine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other public comments related to charter amendments? One second. I don't think so.
So next, we'll move to CR 2?
Oh, we can move one by one.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's fine. Do you have something to say?
Well, I was going to... Ms. Ruff, according to the Maryland state law, what are the requirements in order to change a charter, and who is responsible for doing that in all municipalities throughout the state?
Well, how you change a charter is dictated by the General Assembly. And so the annotated code in the local government article is going to address that. I'm going to pull it up right now. There are a couple of ways to change your charter. One is to have it initiated by the legislative body, such as that which is before you tonight to consider. Just one second, I'm sorry. Okay. So you can initiate it by the legislative body. It can also be initiated by petition of the voters. But the process for initiating a charter amendment is for the legislative body to put together a charter amendment resolution in a form that is in accordance with state law, so it tells you every change that you're making. It would then be introduced. It is subject to a public hearing, 21 days' notice to have a public hearing, which is what you're doing tonight. And then you will vote on it. You could, under state law, vote on it tonight, but I believe your rules require that you wait until next, at least six days. So then you will vote on it next week. Have I answered the question?
Yes, and just a follow-up question. To the best of your knowledge, there have been a number of charter resolutions over the years, not just with this particular council. Have any of those charter resolutions ever been on the ballot for citizens to vote on, including charter resolutions that have changed the structure from ward to at-large, back to ward?
Not that I'm aware of. But if I could also add to my other answer, I should also say that if a charter amendment resolution is adopted, there is a public notice provision. It would be advertised in a newspaper of general circulation for at least four times at weekly intervals over a 40-day period, and it doesn't become effective until the 50th day. But no.
Okay. So we have never, in the city of Glen Arden, put charter resolutions on the ballot. And this change from a ward structure to an at-large is not the first time it's been done. In fact, the council, prior to this council, was all at-large, and prior to that, they were ward representatives. Thank you.
So, Ms. Wilson, we were about to move on to CR 2-2025, but I know you want to talk on one, so... No. Ward 1 has already been spoken for. No, no, I'm sorry. So just some background, Ms. Wilson, since you just arrived, and for all the other people who just came in the building. So we're taking this public hearing in two parts, right? So given the importance of the charter amendments, we're only discussing charter amendments right now. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak on charter amendments, then we will close that portion out, and then we'll go to the regular legislation and ordinance for the month of October. So with that, you'll have five minutes to speak on the charter amendment.
01.
Okay. So I'm going to alter something here, because I thought it was doing a different way. So I'm going to give you three minutes to speak on specifically Charter Amendment 01. I take that back. I'll give you five minutes, because everybody else has five minutes.
Thank you.
But for 2, 3, and 4, I'm going to put it down to 3 minutes. But for two, three, and four, I'm gonna put it down to three minutes so that we don't make this a very long meeting, okay? So now you have five minutes for.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I disagree with the, uh, amendment that, the charter resolution that was just spoken on.
Mm-hmm.
Because within it, it talks about, uh, representation, and again, I feel that the way that the representation that you all have, that you all have decided that representation should be, it is wrong. I think that the citizens will not be, be represented fairly if it's all, everybody is, um, at-large, because as a previous speaker said, that you'd be doing a disservice to, it's a possibility that you'll be doing a disservice to two of your wards. Everybody will not be represented equally. You should still have representation from the individual wards, not everybody at-large. It's wrong, because you're putting yourself in a position where as one ward can have all representatives from, uh, the one ward. I think that that's unfair. The fair way, as I have stated previously, would be to have two representatives from each ward and one person at-large. That would be the fair way to have it, not all at-large, because you're setting the city up to fail, to only be controlled by one ward. That's what's, what you're, what you're aiming for, and it's wrong. I really would like to see fair representation in Glenardan. You have wards, whether you agree with that or not, you have wards, and you should have someone from the ward. Individuals should be able to, uh, elect someone to represent them from each ward, not everybody at-large, because it is very clear, it's very clear to me, that you all don't, those who are at-large do not really serve everybody in each individual ward. You do what you want to do for who you want to do it for, and that's unfair. I think that if so, if somebody lives in Ward One, that person knows what Ward One people need. If somebody lives in Ward Two, that person knows more about what is needed in their ward. At-large individuals do not represent everybody. You just don't. You may say you do, but you don't. You don't. A Ward One person can talk to an at-large person, and if that person doesn't like you, you can bet on the fact you're not going to be listened to. I know it, I've experienced it, still experiencing it, and so all my at-large representatives do not represent me. That's a fact. It is a fact. You don't hear what I say. You really don't want to listen to anything that I'm saying, and that's sad, because when I speak, I don't just speak for one person, I speak for all of the people, not just for myself, because I know you're not concerned about those problems that might be going on in my ward. You look out for your own, you look out for where you live, and that's unfortunate. So please change that aspect of, of what it is that you're trying to do now. Please do not have all at-large representatives. The people don't want it. You say that they will vote for who, who, who their, their vote. That's because it's the way you design it, the way you put it forth to people, that they have no other choices, and we should have choices. We really should. So please go back to where it was before. Before, we had two representatives from Ward One, two representatives from Two, what, at the time it was one from Three. You can make it two from representatives from Three now, and just have one at-large to represent the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That was CR zero-one twenty, twenty-five. Are there any other comments on that charter?
I'm gonna step down as a citizen.
No. So Mayor Cross.
I'll stand down as a citizen, I'll sit in these chairs, but I demand to be heard as Ward Three representative and as taxpayer of the city of Glenardan.
Mayor Cross, this meeting is not for, for you. Um, you have a right to sit there, or you can sit there, uh, but that, Mayor Cross, we've been through this, it's been, it's been.
Are you gonna deny me the right to speak as a citizen?
It's been consistent for as long as I've been here, and so if you could, please have your seat so that we can get back to, uh, the public hearing.
I'm gonna be able to speak as a citizen. I'll sit right here, which makes me a citizen.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Moving on.
Are you gonna deny me the right as a citizen?
Uh, Mr. President, point of order. Just to say, just give you a little history on that. It has happened before, where the mayor has stepped down off her seat and she cannot go back to her seat, and she sat, the, the mayor at that time sat out there in the audience and was, and was given the right to speak as a citizen, but she had to follow the same rules, but she cannot go back to that mayoral seat after she speaks.
I will.
With all the comments, I'm, I'm just saying that it happened before.
That's fine.
But have you want to do it, you can do it.
That's fine. So I will, as always, if, if the council disagrees with me, I'll just open it up to the council. If we would like the mayor, who started out as the mayor, to then switch to go to as a citizen to speak. If the council wants it, we can move forward with it. If not, then we'll go as how it's always been for the three-plus years I've been here. So Fareed, which, I'm sorry, Councilman Fareed, yes to have her speak, no to not?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Uh, Councilman Jones, have a stand. Uh, Councilman Harris?
What is the question, to, to speak?
To allow her to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Then that's the will of the council, it's yes. Mayor Cross, oh, well, Ms. Cross, um, you have five minutes to speak. Uh, then after that, then you'll be able to speak on the other resolutions, as I've said to couns, not council members, two members, for three minutes to cut down the time. All right? Ms. Cross, you have the floor. Please just state your name and we'll award you a bro.
Hello, I'm Kashina Cross, Ward Three, and I, it's my honor to speak on behalf of this, uh, meeting. For those who would be in annihilation of democracy, we need to stand up for what it means to be a resident in this city. Uh, we are not gonna support this charter amendment zero-one, uh, 2025. One of the thing, the key things that it does is it really takes away the democracy, the choice of the people to actually choose their representation. I agree wholeheartedly with the wards that have been spoken on here, that they are really crying out, wards one and two will not have the representation that Ward Three would have, and it's current, on this current council, that Ward Three tragically outnumbers wards one and wards two representation. Out of seven council members, you only have, at this point, uh, really three that's not affiliated with Ward Three. Uh, and so with that, that's a four-to-three vote already. Uh, there isn't any representation in wards one and two, uh, if we change this particular charter amendment. So I am in complete disagreement with that as a member of Ward Three. While I love my ward and the things that are happening, I know that the city of Glenardan from 1939, when it had its first look at what it should be as a democracy, said, "We will have a town council, and we will have a mayor, and the town council and the mayor shall elect a city manager," which doesn't happen today, by the way. This particular council has led many charter changes that have actually, actually changed the structure of this government, which is not what the Maryland, uh, General Assembly put in place. If you're gonna change the structure of the government, which is the annihilation of the mayor, you need a petition to recall, and that takes about 940 signatures, not a seven-member council and a five-supermajority signature to annihilate the voice of the voter. When it comes down to the city of Glenardan, the city of Glenardan is a city on the move, and this recesses us back to a time when the people could not speak for themselves. It is the reason why these people stood up in Prince George's County and as a unit voted to have a mayor and a town council, and we need to honor that legacy. Right now, we're changing the fabric of this city to look like Greenbelt, Cottage City, and anybody else that elects their mayor pro temp, which annihilates the representative champion of the people. The mayor is the champion of the people elected at-large by the people, and it doesn't matter from what ward it comes. I think we need to really stand on the grounds of democracy at the national level, and I believe Mr. Powell said, "If it was Donald Trump in here doing the same thing, we'd be burning this building down." It is an interesting occurrence where at the national level, we have no problem fighting for our democracy, our constitutional First Amendment right to speak, which is what I did tonight, praise God that the Constitution wasn't disavowed, and also your 14, 15, 13th Amendment, black men, black women, this is your right, and if you allow that right to be annihilated, then you have now exerogated yourself back to the days of slavery, where your constitutional rights didn't mean jack. In this world and in this time, we are the people, the people are the democracy, de most people cradis rule. If you're not ruling for the people's city council, then you're not listening. October the 20th of 2022, 80 citizens came out overwhelmingly, and it is recorded, citizens, you can watch it for yourself, and they all stated almost unanimous that they didn't want this. They told Ms. Ruff, they didn't want this. So when you look and ask questions of the attorney, we have to make sure that we're asking questions that edify the body and not just put a one-sided view. And what I mean by that is, the general council gave us two ways. One is to change the within structure, not to annihilate a structure. To annihilate the structure of mayor being elected by the people, you need to go back to the people. And a petition to election is what you put at the end of this charter change amendment. Well, then I think Mr. Powell is on to something along with many other citizens here, put it on the ballot box and let the people choose, and if the people choose to go your way, then in 2029, you have your say, not 2025. I think that fairness needs to be put back on the ballot box in 2025. May 5th, 2025, elections in Glenardan.
Thank you. So just, and you can continue to speak, I just want, just a point of clarity. Uh, so just to, so all citizens can know, you will still be electing your officials. Everyone in the, every elected official will be elected by the people. So essentially, you will be electing your mayor. For example, you elect seven council members now, but not one of you has selected me to be the council president. That happens among the members. So in the same way, that'll be the same thing that will happen in 2025. So the, one of the, the core pieces of this legislation is that the form of our government currently is a strong council and a very weak mayor. The mayor cannot participate, she, the, he or she, the mayor, the office of mayor, is not a part of the governing body of the city of Glenardan. That person can't vote, that person can't do hardly anything. A lot of that was done before we even were elected as officials. I don't think that's fair. Other members don't think that's fair. What this legislation does is make the mayor a part of the council. So for example, if this was 2025, given the same structure, Mayor Cross will be sitting here, will be the head of the council, and will have a right to vote on legislation and be part of the governing body. That is the intent of, uh, the legislation. So I just wanted to make that clarification. So, I mean, you still can have your view, I'm not trying to change your view, but I just wanted to make that point, that every member in 2025 will be elected, will be elected. You will vote. We're not taking the vote away, it's just dynamics have switched. So with that, we'll move on to CR oh-two, 2025, a charter amendment resolution of the city council Glenardan. I'll hand it over to, um, uh, Ms. Ruff.
Point of order, Mr. President, ma'am.
Shh, sorry, one second. Yes.
Can we just have the attorney go through the next three, and then whoever wants to ask questions on those three can pick and choose which one. I mean, that's what we normally do with charter resolutions. Um, I don't think we have to have, I mean, I mean, we don't have to go through each one and give a hearing to each individual resolution, do we, Ms. Ruff?
Well, yes, you're supposed to have, for every charter resolution, you're supposed to have a public hearing.
Okay, this is it.
And so that's, that's what this is.
But you can, I know what I'm saying, I mean, but you can go through them all and then have people speak on whichever ones they fancy to speak on.
You could incorporate all of the testimony into each one. I, I think I would prefer, if you don't mind, I know it'll take just a little bit longer.
A little bit longer, we already at eight o'clock. And we got something to do afterward.
These last three will be quicker.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was the, CR oh-one was the longest one.
All right, okay.
The following one should be relatively short, I think, and the minutes have been cut down from five to three. So with that.
So CR two, 2025, amends the charter of the city, Article 10, Public Ways and Sidewalks, Section 1002, Control of Public Ways, to exclude from control by the city public ways under the jurisdiction of Prince George's County. So currently, Section 1002 provides that the city shall have control over all public ways in the city except under, those under the jurisdiction of Maryland State Highway Administration. We're proposing to add or Prince George's County. That concludes my summary for that.
Thank you. All right. Are there any public comments on CR zero-two, 2025? Anyone online? Hearing none, Mayor Cross, on CR oh-two, 2025. It's a, it's a habit. I, I, I will probably continue to call him Mayor Cross. I, I know you're in a citizen, but it's just a habit.
Kashina Cross, Ward Three, on CR zero-two, 2025, the public way and sidewalks, all except Maryland or Prince George's County. There's something that's been occurring here inside of the city, and that's those, um, unclaimed lands, little lands that are within the city where people have been able to build because the county has a rule that essentially says, um, that, you know, if it is a small claimed property and someone has it, that they can build as long as it has a cut for the driveway in it. Uh, we've seen this happen on Glenardan Parkway. One of the concerns that I have about this public way and sidewalks is, we technically already have that, and I just want to put in for the record that the package that I received tonight did not include any of these charter amendments, which is why it's important that they're read, because I only see maybe one citizen that could have them, and there's at least two, four, six, eight, uh, nine citizens who do not have this complete package. So I believe that that is, in fact, something, uh, that we need to rectify, because the Maryland Open Meeting Act also says, in this particular meeting, every citizen should have a copy of what's being briefed and talked about at every meeting, and that table is bare. So I just want to put that out there. We cannot continue to expect citizens who may or may not have a computer system to download files when they can't even access them, and we're supposed to provide a hard copy for our residents, particularly when we're over 32% senior citizen in this space tonight, who do not have a copy of the files that we are discussing. And so because you're not reading them, they don't know what they say, only we're reading the title and whatever high-level, uh, Ms. Ruff wants to highlight. I think that is a disservice to the citizens of Glenardan. It's disrespectful not only to those that do not have computer systems, but it, it really is a segregation of our population. So I just want to put that out there, not everybody's on broadband. One of the key things about this particular legislation, though, public ways and sidewalks, we already own that, uh, as our, our Glenardan public, uh, facilities as well, when it comes down to. When it comes down to something happening on our sidewalks and our public right-of-ways, we get through the city a request for approval. Just like the county or the state has to issue a permit, we also have to issue a permit. And for things to happen inside of our city, then we use our code enforcement officers to actually do that permitting process. Now, there was a lapse there over this last year, and I don't believe that that was a code enforcement officer, rather, a acting city manager who actually did sign that paperwork, and it's never been stated, but that's for the record. But we do need to ensure that our code enforcement officers are executing in a way that is sufficiently appropriate when it comes down to our sidewalks and our right-of-ways in the public of Glen Arden's property. Now, I think that we have control of that.
Ms. Cross?
Have I got five minutes?
No, I have three.
Let's just still take it.
No, we, she put it at five.
She got to change?
Yes, but you have three, and I'm gonna stick with the three.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I don't know that this needs to, I don't know exactly what this means. Like I said, I don't have the complete package here.
Ms. Cross, the three minutes is up.
What?
Now, I said that before. Everybody got up there, so there's, this is not, I understand. She actually put five up there. And that's why I interjected. Just one point of clarification. So there were 10 packets of, over there. We did create packets for it. This has been advertised. It's been on the website. It's been outside in the, what do you call those things?
Vestibule.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Vestibule.
Vestibule. It's been upstairs. So when citizens come in, they can examine it. So it has, and any citizen can call and ask for a packet, and we can print a packet out. So we have gone above and beyond the requirement to produce these things. We have no way of knowing who wants one or not, so we just makes it, make it available to people. And so, just for that clarification, this was not done in a vacuum and hidden from citizens.
Mr. President, ma'am, and it's been available for 21 days, correct?
It has been available for 21 days. It's been on a marquee. Anybody that drives down can, can see it. It's been on the website. We did our best to make this available. We're here tonight to hear your voices on it. If you would like a copy of it, then we can make your request tonight, and we can make sure that a copy is, is made. Just make your request tonight. We can actually probably have it ready for you tomorrow if you come back up, and we can provide it to you tomorrow. That is quite all right. But we've done above and beyond to make this available for all of our citizens. So floor is open again for, you want to speak on CR 02, 2025?
Hello?
Ms. Crutchfield, you have to wait for a second. There's somebody at the podium.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
I just want to address something that you just said. What you just said was not true, because all, all packets are not always made available. Because you told me I could not get your packet.
Point of order, that is not, that is not true. Point of order, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, that is not, that is not true.
It is true.
Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson.
I experienced it.
So, Ms. Wilson, listen, respectfully, there, there are more charter amendments that are available, and I don't want to have you escorted out because I want your voices to be, your voice to be heard.
Excuited for what?
Ms. Wilson, so, as a chair of the meeting, when I say point of order, then everything stops.
I didn't stop.
All right, it stops. So you and I can have discussion about regular work sessions, about regular legislation. That's something completely different from charter amendments. I specifically said these charter amendments were available to everyone. I know what you're talking about. It has nothing to do with this. Nothing to do with this. So respectfully, if you have comments on CR 02, 2025, I welcome you to voice your, your concern, but you're wanting to voice your concern on something that's completely different from what we're talking about.
I'm concerned about something that you just told the mayor concerning, concerning this.
So, Ms. Wilson.
Concerning this amendment.
Ms. Wilson, I have a lot of patience, and I'm trying to give you, allow you to stay, but I'm not gonna go back and forth with you.
I wasn't trying to, sir.
Okay, so, if you have comments about CR 02, 2025, please, we would love to hear them.
So when, when will that be made available?
When will what be made available?
The legislation for that.
The legislation, Ms. Wilson, was made available 21 days ago.
You just said if there was someone who wanted it.
If there's, then you can make a request tonight, and we'll have a hard copy for you tomorrow.
I'm making a request for it.
And we will be happy to print one out for you.
Thank you. And when can I get it?
Again, if you make your request tonight.
I'm making it.
We will have it ready tomorrow. Tomorrow by noon, is that adequate time? Tomorrow by noon, you can come up and you can pick up a packet of the charter amendments, specifically, correct? That's what?
That's what I'm speaking of.
Thank you. Now, do you have comments on?
No, I just wanted to know because it wasn't available.
It was available, but if there are no comments on CR 02.
I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Then I'm gonna move on to Ms. Crutchfield, who's online.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello. Isn't it possible, I'm, of course, just getting on, can we go back to the CR 01, 2025, or no?
On CR 02, 2025?
Yeah, yeah. 01, 01.
Ms. Crutchfield, I heard what you said. We are CR 02, 2025. We're not going back to 01.
Well, let me ask you first, you all stopped having the questions at the end. That's why I don't rush on, because I know you're gonna be for a while. So now you're asking questions in between the amendments or resolutions? Is that what you're doing, something different?
Ma'am, for fairness, since, given the importance of these resolutions, we're giving each citizen the ability to speak on each one, so we broke it down that way. So the first portion of our meeting is only geared to charter amendments. The second part of our meeting will be geared to all of the routine legislation ordinance that we have on the docket for October. We have finished CR 01, 2025. We are on CR 02, 2025. If you have comments on CR 02, 2025, then you have three minutes to speak on that amendment.
No, sir. No, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I think I saw your hand. Did you have a comment, or was that just for the copy of the amendments?
Yeah, I was for the copy of the amendments, but I heard the young lady who was speaking, and I just, I thought she had three minutes, that's all, you cut it off, I just, kind of hear it, too.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Dinah Price, Ward 2, hi, again. It's very disheartening as a resident when we're here to make a vote on 02, whatever the resolution is. And we don't have the literature to go along with that. We're here to vote tonight.
No, ma'am, we're not here to vote.
Well, we're here as residents to give our opinion on that. And so how can we give our opinion if there is nothing on the table? Now, I heard what you said, and I'm appreciative of the fact that you made it available online. I'm appreciative of the fact that it was outside. I'm appreciative of the fact that it was upstairs, but it's not here now. And we're all here as residents to either support or not support what we're voting on, or what we have opinion on as residents. You cut off a resident who was letting you know there is no documentation here. It was only three people who had, or four people who had this whole packet. That's disheartening. You cut her off, and all she wants is the packet. It would be very advantageous of you guys to go print off a copy now. And is it three? Oh, I still have.
No, 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 no. So I just want to be clear. So this is an opportunity for you to speak on the charter amendment.
I'm speaking on it.
No, you're speaking on something completely different.
I'm speaking about it.
With all due respect, right? This council has come willingly in a volunteer form to serve the community. We probably, we can stop it, we can stop it. I'm not gonna take any time from you. Routinely, we probably have three people who come to these meetings. That's disheartening. Very disheartening. We all ran to serve the community, and we all try to get public input, but nobody comes. Three people. I could say Mr. Powell is one, Ms. Wilson is another. Nothing. And so, for the past three and a half years, we tirelessly worked to serve the community with only input from maybe three or five people. And so, when you come here, Ms. Price, you, for example, you said that you come here to speak on a resolution, right? Have you read the resolution?
How can I read it? It's not here.
Okay.
I'm here, and I was gonna read it while I was here to give my opinion.
And, 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 but, and I'm not trying to get on you, but that's what I'm talking about. I would love for you to be more involved on a regular basis. On a regular, I would love for all of our citizens, or most of our citizens, to be more involved on a regular basis, because it wouldn't be fair to you for you to come here tonight. It wouldn't be fair for any citizen to come here tonight to thoroughly read a 29-page document and then speak on it and understand it, to like have a coherent opinion on it. And that's unfair. I would agree that that's unfair, but that's not what the council did. The council tries its best to make everything available to its citizens. We've had this, as a matter of fact, it didn't start here. It started with the committee, which we invited the citizens to, to come in to give an opinion on these charter amendments, or what, what, what changes or structure you want as, as residents for you to see in the city of Glen Arden. We did this for over a year. And we probably, I'm sorry, two years. And in those meetings, we probably only had probably one citizen come, maybe two. And this was an open venue for people to come to say, hey, well, I don't like that charter amendment. Hey, what about this idea? Because we wanted to hear from the people, from the people. So then we went, one second, one second, I'm not gonna take any time from you. I'll leave you with the rest of your time. From there, we went back and forth. We finalized the work sessions after two years. Then we come to a formal work session with everybody, and we make an announcement to the citizens, and we're trying to get this message out there. Hey, come, please come, please let your voices be heard. Still, no, no, no pickup. So then, what happens is work session, and next week, there's a, there's a public hearing, and then we vote. We didn't have a vote. We waited 21 days, where we tried our best to make it available. And you, you know, you've been here before. You've been before. We make maybe, I think this time we made 10 packets, and we put out there. But we try our best. So for people to come here and say that we don't make this available, that's just, just just, hold on one second. I said for people, not necessarily you. That's just factually incorrect. So I just want to correct the narrative. This has been a fair and transparent process that we have begged time and time and time and time again for two years for people to be a process of. If you do not have the packet, which you say you don't, Ms. Brown, can please make a note of that? We will, we will print out this packet, and we'll have it to you by 12 o'clock. But the, the notion that we have not made this available for people is just completely false.
Now, what good would it do me tomorrow at 12 o'clock, or 12 o'clock when I'm here tonight, to serve my community and do my due diligence to vote on something that I think will affect me? What good would it do to get it later? I don't see that. Okay, and for you to say that you only see me once.
So, one second. No, 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 one second. So, again, so I'm not gonna go back and forth, but I welcome your comments on CR 02, 2025.
Well, you just talked to me directly, so I'm gonna talk back to you directly.
I made a general statement about what happened.
You mentioned my name in it, so I'm going to respond to that.
No, you're not. It's CR 02, 2025. I just want to make it clear that.
Do I have the right to speak, free speech?
On CR 02, 2025.
Listen, you mentioned to me that you only see me a couple times. I serve Glen Arden, just as you do.
So this is gonna be your first warning? If you have comments on CR 02, 2025.
The comment for, for, for CR, is to make it available so that we can see it.
And I will make it, and I will make it available for you tomorrow. It's been available, but I'll make it, I will have a personal copy for you with your name on it by noon tomorrow.
It is very disheartening that I feel like you are using your position to silence the people of Glen Arden.
I'm not. If you have any more comments on CR 02, 2025, then you're welcome to speak on it.
Mr. President, ma'am?
Yes, Councilman Harren.
We will be voting on this next Monday, on the 21st, correct?
Correct.
So, citizens, you do still have a chance to reach out to everybody. That's one of us to lobby us or speak on whatever you want to speak on when it comes down to the legislation. So this isn't, we're not doing, we're not taking any action tonight, so.
Yeah, no action tonight at all. Are there any other public comments before we move on to CR 03, 2025? Ms. 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 Crutchfield?
Yes.
This is a very, because I'm tasked with maintaining the order of the meetings. You've had your opportunity to speak on CR 02, 2025. Now, if we're moving on to CR 03, 2025, and then I will give you the floor to speak on that legislation.
I'll wait to comment, I'll wait to comment, comments. I'll just wait.
Comment will be restricted to CR 03, 2025. Thank you. Before we move on, is there anyone else who wants to speak on 02? Hearing none, we'll go on to 03. Ms. Ruff, do you have a summary?
Yes, sir. 03, 2025 is a charter amendment resolution of the city council of Glen Arden, amending the charter of the city. Article 2, corporate limits, Section 201, description, public filing of corporate limits, to clarify where the corporate limits will be made obtained on file. Currently, Section 201, subsection B, refers to filing it with the Director of the Department of Legislative Reference. It is no longer called that, so we are proposing to change it to the current name, which is Department of Legislative Services. And rather than to say it will be on file in the city hall, it will now say shall be on file in the city's municipal center with the council clerk if the charter amendment is approved.
All right. With that, the floor is open for public comments on CR 03, 2025. Ms. Crutchfield, do you have a comment on CR 03, 2025?
Mr. Curtis, I will speak when it comes to comments for citizens. Thank you.
Okay, just a heads up, that is not tonight. Are there any other comments for CR 03, 2025?
Point of clarity, Council President, I need Ms. Ruff to read in for the record the specifics about the Director of Legislative Reference, that particular section, please. It's not clear. And also, if we can pause time while she reads that, because I've got another point that's not tied to that, I just need some clarity from Ms. Ruff's reading.
So, could you go through all your points, and then we'll have, that way you have your whole three minutes? So just, we're making.
What I'm gonna say next.
Oh, fair enough. Ms. Ruff?
I'm sorry, you want me to read it out loud?
Yes, for the record.
The courses and distances showing the exact corporate limits of the city shall be filed at all times with the clerk of the circuit court for Prince George's County and the Director of the Department of Legislative Reference, which is proposed to be changed to services of the Maryland General Assembly. Keep going?
So it's the same thing?
In addition, a copy of the courses and distances describing the corporate boundaries shall be on file in, it now says, city hall is proposing to change to city's municipal center with the council clerk in a suitable book or place properly indexed and reasonably available. available for public inspection during normal business hours.
Is that the end?
Yes.
Thank you so much for reading that, Attorney Ruff. Okay, for the continuation of my question, so with the Clerk of Central Committee, right, is where it will be held?
Clerk of the Circuit Court.
Okay, Clerk of the Circuit Court is where it's going to be held. And then, we will have a copy with the Clerk of the City Council?
And you will have a copy as well, yes.
With the Clerk of the City Council?
That is what's proposed.
Right, thank you, Ms. Ruff. Could you define for me, City Council, what is, what's the difference between the municipal center and the City Council? Why are we being so specific where the border limits are held? Because the border is about the city, it's about the entire population. I don't understand why we are specifically saying with the Clerk of the Council. We're on our third Clerk of the Council, so again, it can be a little confusing, right, where this should be held. All pertinent documents, which are core documents of this city, should read specifically with the municipality. I don't agree with any narrow line way of saying where our pertinent, no kidding, hard documents are to be kept. That doesn't add any specification, it only actually restricts the ability, I think, to the availability of the Clerk versus the municipality, which at this point, the city manager should be able to get to it. But the city manager doesn't have access to the Clerk's emails, nor the Clerk's files. So, there isn't a place, I'm presuming, there isn't a place where if a resident comes in in the 8:30 to 5:30 hour and say, I want to see our borders and where we are drawn for the purposes of development or residential concerns, that we have to wait for the Clerk of the Council. I recommend that that addition be struck from the record, and it goes back to the municipality, because these are our hard files, and any hard file should be held at the corporate level, not within a municipal body. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ruff?
So I would just say that the only reason that the second change was made from City Hall to city's municipal center with the council clerk is we were trying to give the public a place to go, rather than just City Hall. We were trying to say that is the particular office where you can go to find the corporate boundaries. And with respect to the, the county and the Department of Legislative Services, that's also part of state law, when you do annexations and things like that, you have to send everything to there, and they just, they keep a copy of everything.
Okay, good. All right, sir?
I'm sorry, I know you went over this, I wanted to know, is there any reason why we can't get that package printed tonight?
Because we're actively in a, in a meeting, so there's nobody upstairs to print this out.
Afterwards, maybe?
So, no, because our clerk has a life and a family, I don't want to, you know, have her stay here long, because, I mean, it's a pretty thick packet, so she'll be here for a while, and I would not do that to our staff, so that's why I wanted to give her ample time. Things can go wrong with the printer, make sure we have all the papers not locked up somewhere, so.
Same as well tomorrow, I request to, uh, alert.
Yeah, if, if there's a, can't you, we'll just make, we'll just, we'll make adequate copies, so if anybody come in, so we don't have to, you don't have to give us your name, we'll just make sure.
Can we just come up and pick it up tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, so you would come back here, ring the doorbell, they'll let you up, and we'll make sure it's at the, the front desk, so when you come in, you just say you're here for the charter amendments, it'll be already at the desk, the front.
I just want to know, when is the next time that the, it's going, the public, really going to be able to speak openly about all of these different amendments, or whatever it be, pushing them?
So, this is it.
This is it?
Mm-hmm.
So, that, I, I think that was more of the question, as far as, we get in tonight, we read it, then we're going to speak on it, when are we going to be able to do that? That's not the option. You got to individually reach out to every council member to write a letter, like, what is it that we do after we get that packet? Because it's pointless for me to get it if I can't speak on it. I do want it.
Yeah.
Nobody hears you, but...
Yeah, well.
I apologize, my name is Dante Hunter, I, you know, I'm a citizen, but I did, I was asking in regards to the packet, if there's not going to be another opportunity for us to speak on each topic, then when, like, what's the point of passing out packets tonight? I did hear you guys say that it was 10 packets over there, and I'm not negating that, but there's 10 people in here, and I don't see 10 packets. So I don't know if they came in and got them, but I would like to be able to read it beforehand, and I think honestly, there should be another opportunity for everyone to speak. That's just my opinion, I know you guys make that decision, but I think that everybody should be able to get it tonight, if it's late, and have another opportunity, because voting for something like this is very serious, and it's something that everybody's opinion needs to be heard on. And there's a few things that I do know about, y'all passed it, I was online and right here, so I wasn't able to speak on it at that time, but I would like the opportunity to.
To, I'm sorry, opportunity to what?
Speak on every, every different issue, or legislation, or whatever is, you know, we spoke, because you spoke on it before I got here, like I said, I was listening, we was talking about the mayor, and who was going to be able to make the votes and so forth, which you kind of clarified a few things for me, you know, with, with what you were saying, but I, I still have more questions in regards to that.
I'm sorry, um, yeah.
So there's not another opportunity that can be made for everyone to speak? Once we, we all got the packet, can read over it and so forth, because you did, you said it was on the website, and on the desk, and so forth. I do know that there was a letter that actually came in my property, but that was two days ago, which I don't know if that was adequate enough time for anybody to read over this real large packet that we talking about.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so the way the, the process has gone, again, so this has been something that's in the, the process for about two years. And then it came to a final work session, maybe a month ago, I believe, and then we made these available to citizens. And I'm, I'm sorry that you didn't get one, but-
I completely understand the past, I'm talking about now, like, at this point, because I said y'all going to be making a vote.
The vote will be, the vote will be next Monday.
So, in between, if there's any communications that want to be, like, sent over to you guys, how will, how will you guys get them? If we can't speak, should I be writing a letter, should, what do we have to do?
You can write a letter, you can leave a voicemail, what's your number, and we can give you a call back. Either way, whether it be a written form or a phone call, any is, is, I'm open to communicating with you in any way.
I got it, cool, I just wanted to get some clarity, like I said, because, again, I would like to read it, and then actually be able to voice my opinion on what I read, and it make a difference, so I appreciate you.
Appreciate you. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, I would like to.
Councilman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Erica Fareed. I was the chairperson for the committee that commenced this charter review process several years ago. I find it unfortunate that some citizens have not been able to participate in the full process that we've employed over the last couple of years. And, you know, that's not a, that's not a finger pointing thing, but what I'm saying is that this has been quite a deliberative process. This is not something that we've cooked up in a vacuum over the last few weeks or so and are bringing it forth. This has been a two-year process. And we have made the committee meetings open and available to the citizens, as well as bringing the interim findings that we had to the entire council and city at large to discuss and deliberate those particular points before even moving forward. So there were checkpoints, and we had discussion. And I think that it's very difficult for citizens to have an informed perspective, even from just reading the resolution. So, I will make myself available, I will be traveling out of the country for work, but I will make myself available via email for any questions that people have, because what I like to do is ensure that there's dialogue and understanding. We may not necessarily come to the same agreement, but I would at least like for you to understand the context in which some of these decisions were made, so that you have that full scope as you're making your comments, because I think that's important. And again, we may not come to an agreement, but I think it's important for you to have that understanding of how we arrived at where we arrived. It wasn't just a shot in the dark, it was a lot of compromise and conversation with my other committee members, Councilman Herring, and Council Vice President Angela Ferguson, taking in the history of the city and bringing that all together, and then collectively discussing that as council with opportunities for the public to comment throughout. So again, I will make myself available via email. If you have questions, I'm happy to address those questions as thoroughly as possible, and try to give you as much context as possible in terms of the thinking and how we arrived at it, because some of the conclusions that are being drawn, I think, are, they're just not fair. This is not done to have Ward 3 dominate the council. The representation prior to this council was all at large, and there were five council members from one ward, from Ward 1. It wasn't from Ward 3. So, we're not doing anything in terms of process that's illegal, let's just clarify that. We are following the process that's required by the state, we are following the process the city of Glen Arden has always done for charter resolutions, we're not doing anything differently, and we've made this information available for quite some time, and we'll continue to do so up and through the vote next week. Thank you, Council President.
Mr. President, may I just ask one question? Councilman Fareed, weren't all the meetings recorded, and they are up online, if anybody want to go and view them from beginning to end?
Yes, they were recorded. In the beginning, we were meeting monthly. As we started getting towards the end, we began meeting every other month, and then the meetings became more just the public meetings with the council. But you can find those all on the website, all of the recordings for them, and they were all advertised as well, and open to the public.
Yep. All right. Ms. Cross, is your comment on CR-03 2025?
Yes, your comment on CR-03 2025?
Yes.
Why wasn't there any citizens on the committee to help shape the-
Council's change, with just the three council members that was on the committee for the charter change on 03 2025?
Point of order, Ms. Cross, so.
I was wondering why there aren't those citizens on 03 2025?
It was all together, but one second, did you say one second? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that. So, how we initiated this process was through a resolution, right? So we put forward a resolution to establish the Charter Review Committee and the construction of that committee. We did make modifications in how we did that. I believe it was originally presented that citizens, that I believe citizens were going to be a part of it, and then what we decided was that we would have citizens comment. But again, it's really difficult, two and a half years later, to provide all of that context, right? When, when resolutions are presented, they do not always get passed as they were presented. There's conversation that's had, there's input that's given, and then there's modifications that are made. So the ultimate structure that we moved forward with was the product of that conversation. So, that is why the committee was composed as it was. Whatever was presented at that time was discussed and modified as agreed and then moved forward. So it wasn't done with any sort of intention to not include citizens. Again, the meeting was made available, there were a few meetings where one or two people joined, but for the most part, there was no participation. And, and we did not get any comments during our regular meetings, which I think is a point of clarification here as well. Today's meeting and all public hearings are to talk about specific legislation. The meetings where you can kind of talk about anything and make comments on anything is at the end of the regular meetings. So we've never had comments related to what was discussed at the committee meeting from citizens having reviewed it and come and wanting to make comments, at all. So, I, you know, it's really hard for me to explain why citizens haven't been involved, it's not because they've been left out of the process, it's because there's just generally lack of participation. And I can't explain that to anyone, because as a volunteer, sitting up here, I'm actively engaged.
You just swayed the difference of the question, why weren't they on a committee, not comments from citizens?
So, Ms. Cross.
Why wasn't anybody on a committee?
Ms. Cross, so, if anybody wants to hang back and have some, like, technical conversations about how things perform, look, I'm a night owl, I'll stay behind, I'll converse with you, give you all the answers that hopefully you're looking for. To give, to be fair to everybody in this room who came to voice their opinion on the actual charter amendments, I want to, you know, we kind of, you know, got off course a little bit, but I want to focus on the charter amendments, and afterwards, I promise you, I'll stay behind, kids are in bed, I got all night, all right? So with that, Ms. Wilson, do you have a comment on, on 03? And then I'll go to Ms. Crutchfield.
Okay, my question on this amendment that we're speaking on, plus the other two, is can, you said that they're going to be voted on, this is going to be voted on, on Monday coming.
Correct.
Okay, so my question is, that since you have so much involvement on this and the others, and you have so much citizen questions on this and the others, can the, can the voting be postponed, instead of having it this Monday, you have it another time, instead of having it now, so that now that you're getting citizen input, you still receive that? Does it have to be voted, does this, do these charter amendments have to be voted on, on Monday? They ha, they just, it's imperative that it be done on Monday?
I understand. So, again, I will make myself available for any technical processes after the meeting, but if you have a comment on CR-03 2025, you're welcome to speak on it.
That was my comment on that.
That, that wasn't a comment on, on the CR-03 2025.
Okay, it was a question. So, I would like to say that, I would like to say that this amendment, and the charter, the charter resolution, or amendment, however you want to call it, and all the others, the voting on it, be postponed until another time, including this one that we're talking about.
So, point of order, Ms. Wilson.
The voting not take place on Monday, but it take place at another time.
All right, so, so, unfortunately, I'm going to give you your warning too, and so-
What are you warning me about? I want to be clear on that.
Because rules are, if I give you a warn if I'm trying to gain control of the meeting, then if you don't listen, then I'll have one of our officers escort you out, which I do not want to do, or, you know. But I just specifically said-
Yes.
-that we've gotten off topic, and I'm, I'm welcome to answer any questions or proposals you have after the meeting, but we want to get through this meeting. So, I see that you do not have a comment for 03 2025, on the substance of it.
That, that was my comment for it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to have to move this meeting along, and as you can see, this is not an easy task. We'll go to Ms. Crutchfield. Ms. Crutchfield, do you have any comment on CR-03 2025?
Well, yes and no. Yes is, if you can explain the dynamics of it, as you, I would like for you to explain the dynamics of that resolution. I can see mine, I'm reading it, for that particular one, as well as, just want to point an order, thank you Fareed, for you and the other two councils who worked on these reviews, charter reviews. However, I was there initially, going to the meetings, and they were canceled, I was going diligently, they were canceled, so I got off track with that, and I'm, I'm on these meetings.
Do you have a comment on CR-03 2025, we'll move forward, if not, then, then we're moving Okay, we're moving on to CR-04 2025. Ms. Ruff? Ms. Ruff?
CR-04 20...
She didn't have a question apart from her comment about...
I mean, she didn't say anything.
She was asking for understanding of what that resolution was about.
Well, Ms. Ruff, could you please give another summary of what that resolution of CR-03 was about, please?
Certainly. It is a change to Section 201 of the Charter. Subsection B is proposed to correct the reference to Department of Legislative Reference to Department of Legislative Services, because the name has changed over time. And then also changing where the corporate boundaries will be held on file. Rather than, say, at City Hall, it will say Cities Municipal Center with the Council Clerk.
Thank you. Now, could you go on to CR-04, please?
So the last one before you tonight is CR-04 2025. And that is a charter amendment resolution of the City Council of Glen Arden amending the charter, Article 1, General Corporate Powers, Section 101, enumeration, to retitle the section as incorporation general powers to better describe the contents of the section and amend the section to clarify its provision. So currently, your Section 101 states, this charter is a municipal corporation charter of the City of Glen Arden, the corporate name of which is the City of Glen Arden. We wanted to be a little more clear in the corporate constitution by saying the inhabitants of the City of Glen Arden within the corporate limits legally established from time to time are hereby constituted and continued as a body corporate by the name of the City of Glen Arden. Still keeping this charter is the municipal corporation charter of the city. Then, at the end of what was Section 101, is, we divided that into A and B. At the end of Section B, we added that the city also shall have all of the powers specified for municipalities and all those powers necessarily implied, therefore, under the Constitution and laws of the State of Maryland and the United States of America unless explicitly denied to it by this charter. So that is a summary of the proposed charter.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on CR-04 2025? Ms. Cross?
Ms. Ruff, can you just read that one more time? It's still a little tangled and not clear. You said that corporate constitution, municipal charter. Could you just clarify that again? I'm sorry. It's not clear.
With respect to the proposed change to A or B?
Both.
Both? The proposed amendment to 101, the new A, is to...
Could my time stop while she's clarifying, please? Because it's not clear. I'm not quite understanding what this charter change does differently than what we already have.
It clarifies, if you will, that the inhabitants of the city within the corporate limits legally established from time to time are constituted and continued as a body corporate by the name of the City of Glen Arden. The time-to-time reference refers to, if you might annex property, that might change over time, and people might be added into it.
Okay, it's very confusing, and I do note I was at 2 minutes and 37 seconds. I'm now at 1 minute and 45 seconds, because while Ms. Ruff was trying to clarify what she had stated, the Council President refused to allow me to have the full time of the three minutes, which is a tragedy. But I think that honestly, Ms. Ruff, honestly, this doesn't do anything different than what we already have. We are a municipality. We are chartered as a municipality in the State of Maryland with our own corporate body that is the council and the mayor in accordance to our elections. But what we need to understand is, what does this do for us? How does this do something different than we haven't already had? We have the ability to annex. We have the ability to appoint. We have the ability to establish. We have the ability to take down. If we don't want tobacco stores in our city, we just say, guess what? We don't want them. So I'm not quite understanding what you mean by corporate body. We're already a corporate. We're already, are we incorporating? Is that what you're trying to say? Which means we have the ability to singularly purchase without the approval of the county council or the state? I'm not clear as to what this does differently for us as a municipality, because we're already a chartered municipality. We're part of almost 157 municipalities in the State of Maryland. That's what's not clear. So on this charter, and also, the last statement of this charter, is there any petition of election or petition to referendum or anything associated with this? Or is it just is what it is, and the citizens, again, have to swallow it? Thank you.
With respect to charter amendments?
I don't know. What's at the end of this thing? We don't have a copy.
So, so, one, Ms. Cross, your time is up. So let me just first, again, put out there. So this was, and this was an opportunity for citizens to come to have their voices heard. I think the mayor's being very disingenuous. She's been invited to every one of the work sessions. And so had she participated in the invite?
That's not there.
This is...
You don't get to do that.
Yes, I can't. That was not an attack, Mayor Cross, not, Ms. Cross. Ms. Cross, that's your first warning. And that was not an attack.
It was. You called it out. You just speak in general, because I didn't talk to you directly. I asked her to read the last of this statement. If it's on that paper, she should be able to read.
So, do you have a warning? If you outburst again, Ms. Cross, then I'm going to have to ask one of our officers to remove you. I do not want to do that, so please do not interrupt a piece of the meeting. The fact still remains that the mayor's office was invited to each and every one of the work sessions to help contribute to these charter amendments. The Office of the Mayor chose not to do that. So when I say being disingenuous, I mean that that question, if there was not an understanding of what was going on, could have been asked at any one of the work sessions. It has not, because the Office of the Mayor has not participated.
This has nothing to do with the Office of the Mayor. That was the citizens' vote.
What, Ms. Cross?
Citizens' vote.
So...
Citizens were not included, nor was the mayor on the board.
Chief, could you please escort Ms. Cross out? I find that having to escort people is very unfortunate. I've not raised my voice. I've not yelled at anyone. I've seen that podium be used, oh, you can go ahead. You can, the podium been used to express some very disingenuous things, and so I'll just make a point of clarification.
You just walked in.
She's disrupting me. She's being very disrespectful.
I'm back here as I came in. So I'll follow the orders and come on.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes, one second. Chief?
I just want to...
One second. I'm sorry. Just let him give the numbers, please. Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, good evening. Mr., I'm sorry, Councilman Herring?
Yes, and with the attorney, if she can just verify. The citizens actually have 40 days to petition this to referendum, correct?
Yes, sir. I was going to ask if I could address that briefly before...
I was going back to you.
Before we close the public hearing on these charter amendment resolutions. So I had referred earlier to the fact that over that 40-day period, after a charter resolution is adopted, that it has to be advertised. During that 40 days, a petition for referendum can be filed for the charter resolution. And then if it meets all the requirements of state law, the charter resolution would not become effective, and then there would be action on that basis, so.
So, just for complete transparency, referendum, 40 days. We will actually put in a news, we have to publicize a newspaper after the vote next week, have to publicize a summary of the charter amendments, at which time you will have opportunity for a referendum, correct?
And I might add, too, that every charter amendment resolution towards the end specifically states what the referendum period is, the law where you can go find out what the requirements are for that. And then, you know, if no referendum petition is filed on the 50th day, it will become effective. If not, then you have the referendum to address.
Thank you. All right, so are there any comments? We did CR-04. You did the summary.
We did CR-04. So you'll just want to either close the public hearing or continue if you choose to do it.
All right, so one last opportunity for CR-04 2025? Okay, hearing done. The charter amendment portion of the public hearing is closed, and we're going to move on to our regular ordinances and resolutions. With that, we're just going to open the floor. Citizens will have five minutes to speak on any of the resolutions or ordinances. There are, one, two, three, four, 12 of them. You can pick and choose. We're not going in order. You can just speak on any of them if you would like. The floor is open for public comments.
I don't speak on everything?
Oh, any resolution, not anything?
Any, yeah, so any resolution that you want to speak on. And you can just state your name, what ward you're from, and then you'll have five minutes. Good evening.
My name is Irene Richmond. I'm Ward One. And I haven't been here because I haven't been able to come, but another reason is what happened tonight. A lot of bickering, and it's a lot of time wasted, really. But my complaint is parking. I have had trucks with ladders on them, and I've been told that they are not commercial vehicles. They are. I've had them sit in front of my house for as many as five days without moving. I've had them in some of the neighbors' yards, sitting beyond the driveway, when at one time we weren't allowed to have an inoperable car in our driveway. So parking, I don't know if we have an overflow, I don't think we do, have an overflow parking area. But the upper part of Fitzguy Avenue is ridiculous. There's a house that has seven vehicles. I thought these were single-family houses, but now they've been turned into three and four-family houses, and it's not fair to the residents who've been there forever. And those who are left on the street, I'm saying left because the rest of them have either died or the house has been sold, are mostly seniors. And we can't, I know I don't own the street, but I would like for some of my guests to at least park in front of my house to come and visit me. So that's my biggest complaint. That is my complaint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Irene Richmond.
Irene Richmond.
Oh, several times.
What one?
My name is Anthony Powell. I live in Ward One. And these are legislation about commercial vehicle parking restrictions and vehicle and traffic, I guess, vehicle and traffic laws. The laws of Glen Arden should be the same as the laws of the other cities in the county. You can't have a separate law that's different from the other cities. That way, we end up getting sued. See what I mean?
No.
I mean, laws for that for McCarrleton, College Park, Charlotte, we'd say laws for Glen Arden. No.
That, that, sorry. Municipalities...
Your mic, your mic.
Municipalities have the authority to make their own rules through the codes, so we don't have to do the same thing as other municipalities. We can be informed by what they do and learn from why they're doing it to inform our own way of moving forward, but we're not required or obligated in any way.
I understand that you're not required, but that's something that you should look into. The laws, like you have pet laws. The pet laws for Glen Arden is the same as the pet laws for the county. You see what I mean? You don't have a separate law for that. Am I right or wrong?
Well, true.
Tell me if I'm right or wrong.
But theoretically, if we only follow the rules...
The laws for the county, the parking laws for Glen Arden should be the same as the laws for the other jurisdictions in the county.
So, yeah, that just, if that was the case, then there would no, there wouldn't be any municipality. So just be the county.
I'm saying that's something you should look into, because once we get sued, we're going to get sued.
I think I'm just misunderstanding.
What is he talking about?
Councilman Herring?
Mr. President, may I, Mr. Powell, under the Maryland state law, under Annotated Code of Maryland, a municipal government is, it governs itself. We do not have to follow any laws that any other municipality does. We will not be sued. We can basically say we don't want any commercial vehicles or any certain type of vehicles. We can do parking on one side of the street. We can set a street down, because we are independent municipality in the state of Maryland. We have options to do things that the county don't do. We can either follow their law, like you said with animal control. I'll try to specifically say as we follow the county rules for animal control, because we don't have an animal control department. But we do have our own laws that we can put in place to make it stricter for parking, because every municipality is different. Some municipalities aren't having the problems that we have. If we did that with the county, I guarantee a bunch of people would probably be complaining about that. So, under Maryland state law, we can do, basically, we can basically do what we want as long as it's within, it's not in violation of Maryland state law. And a lot of times, Maryland state law gives you a lot of leverage for a municipality to do what they please. So that's the way it is. We're not getting sued by anybody.
Okay, it's up to you.
Thank you.
My name is Laletia Gaither. I'm from Ward One. I'm here to support the commercial vehicle parking restrictions and also the addressing the commercial parking concerns. Living in Ward One, and I'm a lifelong, I was almost born in here, so living in Ward One right now is difficult as far as parking and navigating the streets. We've never had this amount of commercial vehicles on that side since I can remember. People have trouble getting out of their driveways. You have trouble parking in front of your house. You have trouble with people coming to visit you to be able to park, because besides just the commercial vehicles, you also have these multifamily housing now, where there's also more cars actually in each house. So to get rid of the commercial vehicles would be a plus for us. I thank Mr. Herring for actually putting it in, because I do think if you're actually living in a ward, you actually experience more of what's going on than if you're outside of the ward, even though you're still part of Glen Arden. So I just hope that the council will see fit to approve those, the legislation. to approve those, the legislation, legislation that's on the, the books. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cross, I believe.
Yes, I just want to go ahead and just say real quick that the commercial vehicles, if you have a commercial vehicle, it should not be parked on county or city property. If you have a commercial vehicle and you bring it home for whatever reason, your commercial vehicle should be parked on your personal property, on your driveway, on your awning, whatever you got your overhang that's covering up your carport. That's where the commercial vehicle should be parked if they fit inside of that spacing area and not blocking any sidewalks and not sticking out into the street. So, if you have a commercial vehicle, I feel that that should be on your property and not on the city or the county property parked onto the street. And if you have, and if you don't have enough space, move your personal car onto the street and put the commercial vehicle on your property. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other public comments on pending ordinances or resolutions? Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, if I remember correctly, part of the legislation that is supposed to come forth deals with Public Works wanting a new truck and Public Works wanting a leaf blower and that, what do you call that little bulldozer? Whatever that is, whatever it's called. I forgot what it's called.
A bobcat.
A bobcat, thank you. I disagree with those, those pieces of legislation, because if those aren't things that we actually need, if we're just thinking about things to spend money on, I don't think we should just do that. I don't think we should just spend money needlessly. If it's something that's needed, yes. But to experiment with it, no. It's my understanding, if I remember correctly, many years ago, we experimented, we had leaf collects, leaf collections supposed to have been done. It didn't work. It did not work out. And with the, with the many cars that are on the street, not just at nighttime, but even during the day, how will it work that a leaf blower can come along and, you know, get the leaves out of the streets? If you still have cars in the streets, how is that to work? So, I don't, I don't agree with us getting a new truck if it's not needed, because if I remember correctly at the work session, the acting city manager did not say that it was something that was needed. They could use, he said they could use it, but it wasn't, not anything that was needed. And also, about the bobcat, we could use, but not, it wasn't needed. So, I don't, I'm not for us just spending money to be spending it unnecessarily. So, I'm against those pieces of legislation.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Okay. Hearing none. The council has the right to go in a closed session anytime during a public meeting. Pursuant to Antetokounmpo Code of Maryland, State Government, Article, Section 10-508A, the council by majority vote may retire to executive or closed session at any time during a meeting. Should the council retire to executive closed session, the chair will announce the reasons, and a report will be issued at a future meeting disclosing the reasons for such a closed session. And I am, the purpose of this executive meeting is to discuss personnel and resumes that we received for open positions in the city of Glen Arden. With that, I motion that we adjourn to executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Free?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herring?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
Council President Curtis?
Yes. The vote stays with that. The open portion of this meeting is now closed. Thank you. Our next meeting will be on Monday. Next Monday at 7:30, we'll be voting on the charter amendments and resolutions and ordinance that are on the schedule for tonight. Thank you.